City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Alderman Fleming.
Here.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Berthwaite. Alderman Nguyen. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Suffertin. Alderman Ravel. And Alderman Rainey. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, City Clerk, and welcome, everybody, to the Monday, February 4th, 2019, Special City Council Meeting with a focus exclusively on housing, and affordable housing here in Evanston, a topic that lots of people in this room and outside this room in our city care about. There is one person that sadly I want to acknowledge because he sadly passed away last week, and it was a week ago today that we were actually up here at the dais and talking about the seriousness of the snow that we were getting, of the polar vortex, and sadly, Adrian Willoughby, who is a very hardworking, you know, sort of low-key but very, very committed guy to affordable housing here in Evanston, was the executive director of the Reba Development Corporation, and just a very, very loved person in this community. Sadly passed away. There was a beautiful memorial service for him this weekend at Reba, and lots of folks here and elsewhere in the community were there, and it's a real loss to Evanston. I first met Adrian during the campaign, and he wanted to talk, not surprisingly, about housing and affordable housing. So I would just ask us to keep Adrian's mom Judy, Adrian's wife Cindy, and all his family and friends in your hearts and in your minds and in your prayers, and let's keep Adrian in mind as we continue to embark on trying to make Evanston more affordable so that we can continue to have a diverse community here. With that, I want to put a big thanks out there to the Public Works staff and everybody else that worked really, really hard last week, and we got a -- I'm not going to read it. We got a lovely unsolicited email from someone who really wanted to give a shout-out to Edgar, who runs the snow removal operation, and the entire staff. So thank you, everybody, and thank you for your patience. It's never easy when it's that cold out or we have that much snow, but I think we did a good job getting through it. So thank you, Mr. City Manager. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the City Manager if you have any announcements.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Let me just echo the mayor's comments. I really want to thank all of the city staff and the community for their cooperation. We were able to do was usually a three-day snow emergency in two days in order to get everything picked up so people wouldn't have to be out in the worst of the cold. We had staff really from almost every department, police, fire, public works. We had folks checking on all of our facilities to make sure the pipes weren't freezing. 3-1-1 worked a tremendous number of hours. At one point on Wednesday, we had over 3,000 Evanston residents without power, and we were able to work as a good team with Commonwealth Edison to address those issues. We'll be coming to the council at your meeting on the 18th of February with sort of an after-action report, to talk more specifics about what we learned and what we would like to try to do in the future for those sort of events, but really I want to take this opportunity to thank not only our staff of the residents of Evanston for helping get through several very challenging days. Next, today is the 4th of February, and we are beginning Black History Month. Ken Cherry is here, the manager of Fleetwood Jordan Center. We're doing a whole variety of activities and events that are city-sponsored for Black History Month, and I'd like to ask Ken to come up and give an overview of the events that are coming up over the next few weeks. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor, Clerk Reed, City Manager to the council, just to highlight some of the events that's taking place on behalf of Director Hemingway and the entire Parks, Recreation, and Community Service staff. We started off yesterday with a wonderful event at Gibbs Morrison partnered with Gabrielle Jean Paul Aguilera, and we had this wonderful San Kofa Haiti event reception at Gibbs Morrison that took place yesterday. Tonight, there was in the Fleetwood Jordan Art Gallery right here at 7:00 PM, there was a Black Evanston History Makers Up Close. This gathering was partnered with Fleetwood Jordan Theater and Shorefront, had a conversation with Gloria Clooney, Big Sam Johnson, and ETHS Honesty Stewart, Chloe Smith. This event was open to the public, took place tonight at 7:00. On January 11th through March 7th, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM daily, you'll be able to visit the Word Art Exhibition at the Norris Cultural Arts Center at the second-floor art gallery there. This exhibition is put forward by Evanston artists Ben Blount and Melissa Blount. These dedicated artists contributed and created these black women have made -- these contributors, black women have made, told letters, letter by letter and word by word through hand-printed letterpress posters and hand-embroidered household textiles. Got to go see what this is. Don't really know what it'll look like, but I'm going. Admission to that is free. Also, Sunday, February 10th, 3:00 PM, The Whooping Man, the stage reading is going to take place, presented by the Center for the Black Church and the Black Experience at Garrett Evangelical Theological Seminary at Northwestern University and Fleetwood Jordan Theater. They're going to host this stage reading of the emotional potent play, The Whooping Man, by Matthew Lopez. This is going to take place again on Sunday, February 10th at 3:00 PM. There'll also be a lively discussion afterward. It's free and open to the public. Light snacks and beverages will be served. Love those light snacks and beverages. Also, on Sunday, February 24th, at 3:00 PM, at the Fleetwood Jordan Theater in the Norris Cultural Arts Center, there's going to be this Soul Stirring Tribute to the Queen of Soul, Aretha Franklin, featuring this powerhouse singer, Keana McNary, and the McNary Experience Band. Now, for this one, you need tickets. Advance tickets are $20 online at fjtheater.com. $30 at the door. You don't want to miss that wonderful music. That's Sunday, February 24th. Then, throughout the month, and you can find information about this, there's this Out of Africa Diaspora to Evanston, Illinois, a mosaic of human community. At the request of several members of the Evanston community, the Center for the Church and the Black Experience at Garrett Evangelical Theological Seminary at Northwestern University, and numerous African-American churches and organizations, they have all come together for this project, Out of the African Diaspora to Evanston, Illinois, a Mosaic of Human Community. This unique schedule of events use the Stations of the Cross to situate the history of Black Americans. Participants will experience Black history from pre-colonial Africa to the present day at the 10 Stations throughout February and March, through various productions of historical texts, arts, photographs, artifacts, teachings, preachings, Bible study, and scriptures. Participants will explore all of this and many moments and movements in Black history. You can find more information about that on our website. And then, on Saturday, February 23rd, at noon, admission is free, and there's going to be refreshments, you know, snacks and beverages, at the Fleetwood Jordan Center. Second Baptist Church is Evanston's oldest black church. Ebenezer AME Church is a member of the oldest black denomination, and we will present music and historical data showing the impact of the church on the Evanston African-American community. We'll have history of these historic congregations, as well as singing and presentations by other Evanston churches. This is going to be Saturday, February 23rd, at noon. I speak in front of people all the time, but this was very difficult. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
That concludes my report. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cherry. City Clerk, do you have any announcements?
Yes, I have one announcement, a communication which I will just summarize. I received a communication from Dr. Crosby, who sent a letter to me personally, but also sent a statement that will be entered in full onto the record into the minutes, and in summary, it just, Dr. Crosby states that he would like to see and hopes to see the city move forward with discussions around education of officers and making sure that we address bias. The full statement will be in the minutes, and so folks can review that, as well as members of the dais, unless you have a question.
No, I was going to say, and City Manager, we can also make sure the police chief gets that. I think that would be good.
Yes, we'll make sure of that. Election is still a bit away, but I want to start letting folks know that our election page for the City of Evanston's website is updated, and so you can start to find information on candidates on forms. So if you're holding a form in the community, please inform the Clerk's office, and we'll make sure that it gets on the city's website, so folks can know where they can learn more about candidates for the upcoming school board elections. And for folks who are sitting on the dais in the community or in the, you know, in director-level positions, pretty soon you will be filing your statements of economic interest with the county Board of Elections, so an email will be coming out in the near future for everyone. Remember to file those. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Clerk Reed. Okay, we're going to turn now to public comment. We have about 24 people that are signed up today, and I got to pull it up here, for public comment. So I'm going to ask if each person can keep your comments. You know, as everybody knows, or maybe you don't know, we set aside 45 minutes for public comment. We take the number of people that would like to speak. We divide it by 45. So I'm going to ask the City Clerk who times it, let's set it at 1:45 today for folks. So you have a minute and 45 seconds, and I just ask, as always, just to be respectful of the time of other people that want to come up here and speak, and we'll get through this. So the first three speakers, and I apologize ahead of time if I mispronounce anyone's name, Diana Rosinski, Peter Miller, and Ray Friedman.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak. I'm going to speak fast and enter my comments into the record. I support affordable housing in Evanston and increasing the amount, and I also support the owner occupancy requirement for ADUs. An owner occupancy requirement would put the gentle in gentle density. The city staff has prepared a memo as information, and I suggest that that memo is incomplete, and it doesn't include information for many communities across the country that have an owner occupancy requirement. These include Durango, Colorado, Minneapolis, San Antonio, Palo Alto, Long Beach, Kirkland, Montgomery County, Maryland. All have grappled with some of the issues that are raised in the memo, such as, for example, estate planning, and how do you include an ADU in a trust? Communities such as Montgomery County, Maryland, and Palo Alto, California, think deeply about trusts and about estate planning, and they have, they've grappled with it, and they have ways of dealing with it. The city also mentions the burden that would be involved in owner occupancy and establishing it and checking it, essentially verifying it each year. And I wonder if the city does think that someone who would come forth to go through the certification process, who may spend thousands of dollars in modifying, repairing, having permits to bring an ADU up to code, and/or to spend hundreds perhaps in building an ADU, if they would really be deterred by essentially verifying that they are living in the property as required by the ordinance? At this point, I don't think the ADU ordinance as presented is really about affordability, but rather a way of making property that single-family into property that up to six unrelated adults can live in, and I urge the council to support the owner occupancy requirement to maintain some peace and tranquility in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Miller, Ray Freeman, and Priscilla Giles.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for your time. I support affordable housing in Evanston, and I support the ADU concept as one means to achieve it. The vision of the ADU as presented to the public has been presented as a win-win situation for elderly folks who are living on a fixed income and need money to pay taxes and are and need some extra income to rent to lower-income folks who can help them with this, with these issues, the lower-income folks then get a place to live. This win-win vision, however, is counteracted by the staff memo written by the same folks who have presented these public presentations, which is clearly against the owner occupancy provision. An alternative vision then becomes evident. Six unrelated individuals, three in each of the two dwelling units, each of them perhaps paying much more than what would be available to a resident with a low income, because they can and because the developer, an absentee landlord, is only out to maximize income and is not interested really in affordable housing. Further detriment to the neighborhood is likely to happen in such instances. I can tell you without hyperbole, let's imagine that those six unrelated individuals are members of the same fraternity who hold up parties on a regular basis and invite their friends, as has happened to me. That's the kind of vision that you want to avoid, and you can encourage affordable housing and integrate it into our neighborhoods if you adopt an owner occupancy provision. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ray Freeman, Priscilla Giles, then Darlene Cannon.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, City Council, City Manager, City Clerk. As we're here tonight to discuss affordable housing, I'd like to start by saying that after spending the last two years researching the subject, we found it's a whole lot more complicated than we would have imagined. With different types of affordable housing and different guidelines needed to be followed, is it subsidized, and by who? Is it inclusionary or permanent supportive housing? What percentage of AMI is appropriate, 30%, 50%, 80%, 100%? How do we determine this? It seems that with every new structure, there is a new set of guidelines. I guess we need a new committee to discuss all of these guidelines, but no, we have our DAPR Committee for starters, who has given zoning approval for 16 units of inclusionary housing at Pittner and Dempster. The 16 units are actually permanent supportive units, which has their own set of guidelines to follow. This building does not follow the guidelines set up by the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance from just three years ago. We're still waiting for the impact study to show how the 16-unit building will affect our property values, which was requested by our Second Ward Alderman to City Manager last year. You have denied our due process by refusing to hear our appeal, as afforded to us in Appeals Number 6-3-11, and did not follow the guidelines of the DAPR Committee, which states that "one purpose of the DAPR Committee is to ensure that the development or redevelopment is compatible with its surroundings." With review and discussion with city staff and community members, please drive by Dempster and Pittner and let us know if the 16-unit building is compatible with its surroundings. And by the way, the 16-unit building is replacing a single-family brick ranch house with two-car attached garage.
Ray, I need you to wrap it up.
Can I say one more thing?
Real quick.
Okay. Do you know, after reading through hundreds of agendas and seeing that you had made a change in public comment, when there's less than five speakers, I picked up the last sentence that reads, "Public comment is intended to foster dialogue in a respectful and civil manner." Then I said to myself, in its simplest form, it's a conversation between two or more people, and it's exchange and discussion of ideas, being open and frank, and seeking mutual understanding and harmony. So my question tonight is, when, where, and with whom are we having the dialogue with? Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Thanks.
All right, we've got Priscilla Giles, Darlene Cannon, then Tracy Kurtser. And again, everybody, I ask if we can keep these comments to no more than a minute 45. When you hear these chimes go off, please work real hard to just wrap it up quick.
Thank you.
Welcome.
I don't want to detract from the good that the city did during the extreme cold that we just experienced, but I do want to ask the city to be more than mindful of our elderly, physically and economically challenged citizens who services were not met. When I was growing up, Evanston, in Evanston, there were many vacant lots. These vacant lots were gardens, and when those, and all the sidewalks in Evanston were shoveled, even in front of the vacant lots. When the gardens became homes, they produced more taxes, and I believe that those taxes should cover the removal of snow from the sidewalks. The physically, economically challenged can't clear their sidewalks, nor do they have the funds to pay someone to do it for them. This goes for the elderly, too. Picture the mounds of snow around the parking meters and the parking boxes around the post office and other downtown businesses. The city can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Giles. Darlene.
That's it. Darlene Cannon had to go, and she asked me to make this message for her. Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, City Manager, City Clerk, and members. This comes from Darlene Cannon. My name is Darlene Cannon, and I am a resident of the Second Ward. I am one of the group of the Harley Clark Community Engagement Committee, who along with the Evanston Lake House and Gardens Organization, had a meeting at the Civic Center on January 24th. The meeting was held to get good ideas from the citizens. The rooms filled to capacity. Attendance exceeded 100. On February 28th, there will be a follow-up meeting here at the Civic Center to get the ideas from the citizens. You, Mayor Hagerty, and all the members of the City Council are more than welcome to join the people you represent. So we're asking you, Mayor Hagerty, the City Manager, and the City Council, to cease and desist from discussing in small groups until you hear from the people that you serve, the citizens of Evanston. We think it is irresponsible for you to leave out 80% of the people, as well as people of color, in these discussions. Key issues which were raised at our 124 meeting are needed to include all of the people of Evanston, black, white, brown, yellow, rich, and poor regarding the use of the house, the Harley Clark Mansion. We hope that you will become part of the citizens of Evanston who plan to use the house for the community. I want to echo everything Darlene just said. The Evanston community came out across all wards and spoke loudly and clearly when they voted en masse in favor of keeping the Harley Clark Mansion for public use. A large crowd of residents from all wards came out a week ago, thirsty filling the parasol room. We heard about the importance of inclusivity and equity in the future plans. I hope our elected officials and city staff will attend the next community meeting. Thank you. Claire Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Tracy Kurtser, let me just get back to the list. Tracy Kurtser, then Claire Kelly, then Tom Swigert.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. I'm going to go a little off-topic, because this is probably going to be the last meeting I'm attending as I'm moving Evanston, but my purpose here today was just to not let the issue of victim services program go off the radar, because I'm afraid that July is going to be, come upon us very quickly, and I want to make sure that we have plans to keep this vital program. I know we were given a stay for six months, and I thank all of you for that vote in the budget, and it's under the Health and Human Services Department now, but I am concerned. I think if, as a community, we're not providing adequate victim services, particularly for families of homicide victims, we're going to be causing secondary trauma for those families. For a city that led the country in being one of the first police-based programs providing victim services, a level of concern for keeping a program critical for the well-being of our citizens is imperative. So I encourage the council to thoroughly evaluate if the current level of service provision is adequate and meeting kind of the same standards as we had before, and second, to understand that ideally this should be a program kept under the city's accountability. I think if outside contracting really becomes necessary for budgeting, then a program that has a record of working with survivors of homicide, like the system that's set up in Chicago, must be the path forward. And I say this with the utmost respect for the services provided by the YWCA, and I depend on them regularly in my work. The second thing I just want to bring to everybody's attention, this is Gun Violence Survivors Week, we're in the midst of it, and next Saturday will mark one year from the murder of Yakesz Sumark. He was the first of two deaths by guns in Evanston in 2018, and I want to ask my fellow Evanstonians to remember Yakesz and his family, and second, as a Moms Demand Action member, ask that we honor his death and all victims of gun violence with action. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kurtser. Let's see, is Claire Carlos, did you cover Claire's? Is that way okay? All right, so then we've got Tom Swigert, Rick Switzer, excuse me if I mispronounced that, then Tina Payton.
Yes, my name is Tom Swigert. I'm a third-generation Evanstonian, and I'm here to talk about SP 3, the conversion of the Lot 1 here in Evanston into affordable housing, which I don't have any particularly negative views on, except that we use that parking lot. I've had a business here in Evanston since April of 1978, and we moved into 505 Chicago Avenue in 1991, and we've had our staff, our employees, using that parking lot so that our parking area could be used for clients to be able to come in and out and use our services. We've also provided three lights in that alley for after-hour situations, because when our clients, our employees are coming in to work or leaving work, it's not lit up, so I have three lights down there, two of which are rented from a public utility, and will be gone if we are evicted. We need at least some parking to be able to continue our business. And I would like to not actually move, if I could, because we have a lot of people who are, I mean, IRS considers us an address that they count on. We have a medical research corporation that has used our address as their corporate address for, since 1983. I mean, we're a part of the Evanston. We have a lot more involved than just a thinking a little operation, and we would like to at least keep some parking. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. We got Rick, is Rick Schweitzer here? Oh, come on up, Rick, then Tina Payton, then Sue Lalabac, then Vince Henigan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Schweitzer, and I own a property down the street here at 2404 Ridge. It's a large and beautiful property that is adjacent there on the street by Lincoln. I've been a well-met resident for all of my 65 years, living across the street from Evanston, and currently live one mile from our property that we own and rent out. I am a so-called absentee landlord. In the summer of 1996, almost 23 years ago, I bought an amazing historic property at 2404. I was taken with the historic nature of the mid-1800s farmhouse, the large wild and mostly private two-thirds of an acre, and mostly by the old barn that existed, which boasts a structural beam proudly tagged by the previous owners, is coming from the ruins of the shipwrecked Lady Elgin shipwrecked off of Highwood in 1860. I determined to renovate the farmhouse and restore the old barn to prior glory and create a coach house by so doing. I petitioned the village, and the preservation board for permission received permits and a new address, in fact, for the building, 2404 and a half Ridge, and went to work on what was to become a lengthy labor of love. All these years, we've held on to the dream and have rented out the property with the house as the only livable space. We have sustained substantial losses, year over year, due to maintenance, continuing improvements, debt service, and hefty property taxes, which due to the large acreage have been inescapable. The dream that we've held on to against the day that we may complete our vision, bring water into the barn, and sewer out, and finally rent the property included the restored barn. The ADU ordinance passed last May finally gave us a roadmap to completing this dream. As you can see from the staff research, it's not a reality that non-owner occupied buildings create a lower standard of property maintenance, and in the case of 2404 Ridge, probably the opposite's true. The ADU ordinance you recently passed was insightful, helpful to many, and forward-thinking. It addresses a real felt need by many homeowners needing additional revenue. We encourage you, we think that We encourage you, we think that if there's a poster property in Evanston that addresses the validity of the ADU ordinance without owner occupancy, we think it's two-four-oh-four Ridge, and we encourage you not.
Thank you, Rick. Tina Payton, Sue Lalabac, Vince Henigan.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, City Clerk, City Council. My name is Tina Payton, and I think it needs to bring attention, so you have these meetings for affordable housing, but you need to bring to light what is really going on. So at fourteen-thirteen, fourteen-nineteen, fourteen-twenty-one, fourteen-twenty-five Emerson Street and nineteen-seventeen Jackson, there's planned to be, they're going to bring forward that these properties will be demolished. And these are traditionally affordable units. One of the ladies, she couldn't be here tonight to speak, that she has to move out of her place by the end of the month, and she's one of the persons that are going to be displaced. There's supposed to be luxury townhomes being built for torn-down and replace of these buildings. So I have a concern at fourteen-twenty-one Emerson, which is an NSP-two property, and in two thousand twelve, it was acquired for Brent Shore for seventy-seven thousand two-hundred-and-twenty dollars. In twenty-fourteen, it was sold as an affordable NSP-two property, which Alderman Simmons, Rue Simmons, did work on the property, so she can attest more to that. It was sold for two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand. On eleven-nine of last year, it was sold for five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. I want to know why an NSP-two property, which is government money given to this house, was able to be sold for demolition. Seems like some kind of rules and regulations, and I would also like to know why Sarah Flax's name is on the recorder of deeds, and what is going on with the city in this transaction.
Sue Lalabac, do you have a whole group that's going to come rotate through, Sue? Is that where?
No, they're just standing up here with me. Yeah, don't worry. Don't worry.
Sure, sometimes you guys are organizing, you just have one after another. We love that, so, okay.
Yeah, so my name is Sue Lalabac. I work at Connections for the Homeless, and I'm representing our coalition called Joining Forces for Affordable Housing. We would like to first say that we're very excited about the new developments that are being talked about tonight. We know that there will be concerns amongst the neighbors in the vicinities of these new developments, but we also know that the city will work hard to address those concerns while still moving these new affordable buildings forward. We'd also like to ask tonight that the City Council not change the current ordinance on accessory dwelling units to require owner occupancy of one of the units on a property. We are against this change for the following reasons, many explained in detail in the packet for tonight. One, newer research shows that ADUs on parcels that are not owner occupied are generally no less well-maintained than those that are owner occupied. Two, this restriction does not apply to two flats or duplexes. We're not quite sure why they should apply to situations like coach houses. Three, we expect that owners who do not want to live on a property but would rather rent out both units will do so whether or not there is an ordinance. Four, imposing this restriction will impose legal encumbrances on properties, which may make it more difficult for owners to sell their properties in the future. Five, most important for us in Joining Forces for Affordable Housing, and that's who these people are up here with me, this restriction will limit the flexibility that owners have in using ADUs as affordable housing for members of the community. And six, particularly while the Affordable Housing Plan Subcommittee is doing its work, we feel it's very important to not impose new restrictions that have the potential of impeding affordability. Finally, our hope is that the next step on use of coach houses and other ADUs will be to not add additional restrictions, but to develop an incentive program that encourages use of the ADUs as affordable units for those who could not otherwise live in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue, and thank you, everybody. Vince Henigan, Dan Fagerstein, Shirley Adams.
Hi, I'm Vince Henigan. I'm with Impact Behavioral Health Partners. We're a nonprofit that does work with housing homeless individuals and people with chronic mental illness. We own six properties in the Evanston area, and we are always looking to house more people. We house around sixty or so people right now in the Evanston area that would fall in-between the fifteen to thirty percent AMI range. And the owner occupancy of accessory dwelling units would actually prevent us from trying to expand some of our housing stock and providing more units, because we obviously don't live in the units of the buildings that we own. We wouldn't have the ability to make adjustments to our properties, to add new units in an accessory-type unit, or even purchase a single-family that has this option to do that and create this housing. So by having the owner occupancy status, you prevent agencies like mine from being able to create the maximum amount of housing that we can. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Vince. We got Dan Fagerstein, okay, then Shirley Adams, then Carlos, are we coming up again, Carlos? Oh, for yourself, okay.
Dan Fagerstein, I have the law office, this blue cottage at the southeast corner of Chicago Avenue and South Boulevard, and this was tremendously upsetting news to me, because I rent two spaces in the lot, because street parking already is pretty poor, and I've had a lot of clients come to my office and say, "God, it's really difficult to park around here." And the parking in the neighborhood is already very, very poor. And if Evanston wants to turn southeast Evanston into something similar to what's going on in East Rogers Park, I'm sure we've all visited people in East Rogers Park, and it's unbelievably difficult to park there, this plan is the perfect plan to turn southeast Evanston into northeast Rogers Park. And I'm just going to rip through a couple of the zoning standards. Securing adequate light, pure air, safety from fire and other dangers, conserving and enhancing the taxable value of land and buildings throughout the city, minimizing or lessening congestion in the public streets, regulating and limiting the intensity of the use of lot areas, regulating and determining open spaces between and among the surrounding buildings. I think if this were anything other than a public land here, if this was a private developer changing the use or changing ownership of the property, there would have been much more discussion in the neighborhood. The neighborhood disclosure about this plan has been almost nonexistent, and I'm going to ask you to withhold voting on this until there can be a serious discussion in the neighborhood as to what's going on. You're asking the city to spend a lot of time on this plan, you're asking developers to spend a lot of time making proposals for this plan, you're effectively asking people to spin a lot of wheels, and you haven't discussed this in the neighborhood yet. And I really think, before proceeding, you really need to have a very open discussion, a transparent discussion, about the impact that this project could have on the neighborhood.
Great, thank you, Dan. Shirley Adams, Carlos Sutton, then Doug Sharp.
I'm Shirley Adams, and I've lived here for ten years in the 3rd Ward. I moved here from a town called Decatur, Georgia, which I think is a lot like Evanston. You know, great schools, progressive government, pretty good race relations, good public safety, high taxes. And when I left there, I left a home that has a carriage house behind it. I lived in the big house, the big house, and rented to a long-term person in the carriage house. I didn't know if I was going back to Decatur or not, so I rented my home to some friends. It has worked out really well. My sister currently lives in the larger home, and as usual, the carriage house is rented to someone who loves being there and may never leave. At least, it seems that way. I looked for a home that had a rental unit on it, because it made the property more affordable for me, it added value. I really like having someone close by, I appreciated that, I think my sister appreciates that now, too. And I'm a very strong advocate of affordable housing. So I don't understand complicating the idea of having an accessory dwelling unit, or carriage house, or coach house, and then requiring that one of the units be owner occupied. It would be very complicated. Been for me, if I'd had to sell in order, before I moved here, I can't imagine after the recession how I could have sold easily. It would have been very devastating. So I just want to say that I think the idea is a wonderful, is an effective one, a good one, a useful one, and that I think most of us in Evanston want to support affordable housing, so I think perhaps we should try to allay some of our fears about these secondary accessory dwelling units, and just go on with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos Sutton, Doug Sharp, and then Calvin Lynn.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, Clerk Reed, and members of the City Council. I stand this evening, Carlos Sutton, a 5th Ward resident and a third-generation Evanstonian. I agree with comments made by Mrs. Payton, but I also agree that maybe she should do what I do. I did not go to bed Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday night. I stood out in my driveway with my snow shovel, and I dared that snow plow to put me in. I fought like an idiot. I threw the snow at him and everybody else. So you can come on out, but you're going to have to shovel me in those ditches, too. I will not be moved. Thank you. I also want to ask that you approve SP one and SP four this evening. Those are good things. And in my closing remarks, your consideration on this council should not expedite gentrification, but expand affordable units. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Mr. Sharp, come on up, Doug, then Calvin Lynn, then Richard O'Dwyer.
Yes, my name is Doug Sharp. I live in the 3rd, I'm sorry, in the 9th Ward, and I am a leader with Reclaim Evanston. I'm speaking tonight to voice our opposition to the proposed ordinance modifying the accessory dwelling unit ordinance that was passed last year. We agree with staff's assessment published in tonight's packet that the proposed restriction on the rental of accessory dwelling units is unnecessary, in fact, would reduce the number of affordable dwelling units in Evanston that we hope to gain by the passage of last year's ordinance. We feel it would be a challenge to enforce. Worst of all, it would perpetuate, and this is a quote from the staff's assessment, and I totally agree with, "It would perpetuate longstanding patterns of economic and racial/ethnic segregation." The city took a step forward last year by lifting the requirement that ADUs must be occupied by family members. Let's not negate that step forward by taking a step backward with this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Calvin Lynn, then Richard O'Dwyer, then Bruce McLean.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm the property owner at four-twenty-four South Boulevard, which is right on the driveway of the city parking lot one, and I have some concerns that, I've been there since nineteen ninety-five, and when I moved there, I'd put a lot of work into that property, because it was overtaken by weeds and debris, and nobody maintained it, the parkway, and I improved it, and my property value was significant. It became something that I've cherished. But since I found out about this plan development, I have no recognition, a recollection of transparency from the city about what their plans were. Nobody told me, I just happened to hear from the city website. With that being said, after looking at the zoning ordinance, six-three-two, no, six-three-five-dash-sixteen, it requires proper notification to the surrounding homeowners, which I find was not carried out. There was no, the property value, I feel, will be affected by this, because I won't have a driveway anymore, I won't have a place to drive, I have a small business, as well as the others that spoke here, and I work out of my home for my business. That would affect me tremendously. I feel there's other alternatives, like Lot Thirty-nine, which sits on city property, Thirty-nine and Forty-two, which you already have, urban dwellings, which would fit more of the facade of the neighborhood, instead of taking away from homeowners to have single-family and duplex and build a building there, what affordable housing, I think, would take away from the actual scenery of the neighborhood. Plus the congestion, which we already have people parking to ride the CTA, and they come there and they take up all the parking, and they bring other people, they're undesirable people that like the breaking cars, which was, just happened to me a couple of weeks ago, and the building and zoning effect, I think, should be reconsidered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Members of Lynn, Richard O'Dwyer, then Bruce McLean, then Doreen Stein.
Mayor, manager, clerk, Alderman, thanks for giving us a chance to talk tonight. I'm Calvin's neighbor on four-twenty South Boulevard in the 3rd Ward, and this has kind of hit me like a ton of bricks as well, just like Dan Fagerstein said as well. We don't really know much about it as neighbors, and we're concerned about the parking, the congestion, the size of the building, whatever changes in the character of the neighborhood may happen. Like Calvin, we've put a lot of time and effort and money into our building and made it, improved it significantly. We're worried about our property values. Of course, affordable housing is extremely important, it's a shared value in the city. But we have to be very careful. The goal of lifting up affordable housing, it has to be done very carefully, and there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of discussion that needs to happen in that. I don't know if enough of that has happened, so I'm going to try to keep this brief. Some of my neighbors made very good points already, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. Bruce McLean, Doreen Stein, and then Sarah Vander Wicken.
I'm responding to SP three. I'm here on behalf of Doreen Stein also, and she was unable to make the meeting, unfortunately. But we both have concerns. We live at five-oh-five Hinman Avenue there, which is the house on the corner next to Calvin Lynn, and we got up one morning late this fall to find surveyors on the property. Nobody had notified us that they were there to do a survey that had to do with developing the parking lot. Doreen subsequently contacted the city, who still denied that they were going to develop it, or were doing anything, or making any plans to develop it. We approached, or apparently she had called the city a number of times on this issue, too, and was continually denied, which seems very underhanded to do that. They're all low-income, they're, when you're poor, your home is your biggest asset, and we feel that the property value there would be adversely affected by this development. Additionally, Doreen seems that they're going to put a street in there that would run about four feet directly off of our porch there, eliminating our parking lot, eliminating our parking spaces, and also, I believe there was a garage there at one time that was torn down, and she was told she couldn't put a garage up there, and I believe the city did this deliberately, so they knew that, that time that they were going to develop the lot and tried to keep that from her. Right now, with the current way that this is written, we are not for this development at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. All right, so your remarks were supported by Doreen Stein. So your remarks were supported by Doreen Stein, and she's not here, so Sarah VanderWicken, then Peter Mitchell, then Madeline Decray.
Hi. I just wanted to thank the city staff for taking a proactive, several proactive steps towards the use of city-owned land and city assets to lead to significantly more affordable units outside downtown and outside the 5th Ward. I'm really delighted at the proposals they're presenting tonight, which are really not in formation yet. I mean, they're very preliminary and not requiring the kind of detail that people think that they should have to be responsive to. But not passively waiting for developers to come in, I think, is a major positive step, and I really want to thank them for it. And also, this hasn't been said a lot publicly, but I think the City Council needs to have an educational role in the community dealing with NIMBY. As you know, that means "not in my backyard." And move the community towards understanding YIMBY, "Yes, in my backyard," that it's not the end of the world, that changes happen, a city grows, and it's, it can be positive, and that needs to be nurtured. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Sarah. Peter Mitchell, Madeline Decray, and then Kelly, Kellyanne. And Kellyanne will be our last speaker. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Peter Mitchell. I'm a relatively new resident of Evanston, and I'm surprised by the owner occupancy requirement. I came from Womet, where I raised my family, but I moved to Evanston because of the nature of the community. And this requirement feels a little elitist to me, and it makes me wonder, where do you draw the line between what you can rent and what you can't rent? And I know that there are short-term rentals that are currently being reviewed by this body and others, and it makes me wonder, is there an agenda behind this? And does this signal a change for all of the discussions that have gone on already? So I urge you not to support the owner occupancy requirement.
Great. Thank you, Peter. Madeline Decray? And then after, Ms. Decray will be Kellyanne.
Good evening, everyone. Madeline Decray here, 5th Ward. This month is Black History Month, as everyone knows, hopefully. I just want to start off saying that I'm going to speak tonight for the CNEF, Colored Network for Equality and Fairness. But mostly, I'm going to speak for myself. When I say what I'm saying tonight, it's for me, mostly, okay? First of all, I wanted to speak about housing, the affordable housing. The apartment unit over there that's being built on Emerson and Jackson is terrible. We should know better what's going on in this town in the 5th Ward. Number two, I wanted to speak about sanctuary city, how this sanctuary city have hurt black folks, colored folks, in this Evanston, okay? Immigration. Immigration. Think about it. I'll comment on that more. ETHS, District 65, equality, equity, drugs in our town, profiling on black folks. Now, let me just say this, people of color. Let me tell you a little quick story of what happened in Louisiana when I was coming up. St. Tammany Parish High School, we were entering the middle school. Some of my friends wanted to tell me that Creole was white folks, and the American folks was the black folks, the darker-skinned people who lived on the other side, Americans, they called themselves. Okay, the French and the Spaniards. Before anyone called me a black supremacist up here tonight, I want to tell you that French and Spaniards were down in Louisiana, okay? I'll leave it there for now. Let me say one more thing, people of color. Every time I hear that word, I cringe, because you know why? Nobody mentioned the people of color until it's time to get together with everyone, okay? Now, let me tell you, finish that little story. Black folks, brown folks, I was the brown-colored folks, okay? I was a paper bag. So I was in the middle. The black folks came to me. The Creole people came to me. Oh, I don't take no stuff. I say what's on my mind, and I still do. They wanted to tell me that Creole was white. Black folks wanted to do this. They pitted us together down in Louisiana, okay? Light-skinned black folks, brown-skinned people. Well, let me tell you something. I am colored, and I'm not afraid to say it. You know why? Because my mother told me, "Do not let America forget what they did to black folks," okay? Keep yourselves in your little boxes, call yourself black. Ain't no black and brown going to touch me. 2019, you're going to hit its mouth, and more so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Decray. All right, Kellyanne, you're our last speaker tonight, Kellyanne.
Hi, my name is Kellyanne Alcott. I am a resident of the 5th Ward. I just wanted to talk a little bit about, actually, I actually don't want to talk a lot about it at all, because everyone has come up and made their points about it. SP 2, the ordinance, I would like you to consider not amending the ordinance as it stands, as laid out by Connections for the Homeless. They already told you the six points. You already have all the information. You made this decision to create this ordinance and lift the ban, and show that owners don't have to actually live in the property, for the property to be well-maintained, and you have all the information. I just wanted to reiterate that and make sure you know that I support it.
Thank you. All right. Well, that concludes public comment. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking so eloquently and civilly on a variety of issues, and people with lots of different perspectives on those issues, which I'm sure we'll embark on and discuss as we get through this evening's agenda. So with that, we're going to start to move through the agenda. We've got four items on the agenda tonight, and this is Special Order of Business. The first one is SP 1, which is the Affordable Housing Work Plan progress to date. And this is an update from our city staff on the efforts that are being made, and this is for action to accept and place on file. Welcome, Savannah. Are you going to give us the update?
Yes.
That would be great.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Clerk, and mayors of the city, or members of the City Council. My name is Savannah Clement, and I am the Housing Policy and Planning Analyst here with the city. I'm just going to give a real brief overview of where we are to date on our Affordable Housing Work Plan. There we go. Okay, so I will cover some action items that are on the agenda tonight and activities to date. These items are all separately on the agenda as their own action items, so I won't really cover these in too much detail. I just want to highlight the property at South Boulevard would be accomplishing one of the strategies that we mentioned earlier of leveraging city-owned property to develop affordable housing. Same with the Evergreen Development, that that would be leveraging external resources to get new units into the city. So some activities to date, we passed an inclusionary housing ordinance and amended ordinance from the IHO Subcommittee. It went into effect January 1st of this year. We are working to get the forms updated, and we'll have those on the city's website at the address right there. The updated ordinance is already there. Community Partners for Affordable Housing will continue to manage our waitlist and the income certifications for IHO units, as well as any other affordable units that want to use our centralized waitlist. And then also, under Create Pathways to Home Ownership, there was an intergovernment agreement that was approved by City Council. And then at the meeting on January 14th, 2019, an ordinance was approved to negotiate the sale of 1729 Dodge. Coming to you all in February, we will be having you review an ordinance to approve the sale of that property to ETHS. And this is for a geometry and construction home that is currently being constructed. Again, the accessory dwelling units and outreach and education. We had an event on January 16th at Northwestern. Some people here attended. This is kind of part of our broader effort with the Affordable Housing Plan to engage in outreach and education with the public on some of the initiatives that we are going to be undertaking. And then other sources of revenue, the Housing and Homelessness Commission is working on developing a proposal or recommendation on increasing the demolition tax. We hope to have that to you all in March, April at the latest, so that will be coming soon. And then we have our Affordable Housing Plan and the Steering Committee that will be overseeing its development. The first meeting for this, it was scheduled for last week, but due to the extreme weather, we had to move it. And so it will be Wednesday, February 13th, at 7:00 PM in the parasol room. The members will be using the American Planning Association's framework, which is used as six policy principles. We're matching these with the strategies that were in the Affordable Housing White Paper, and going to use this as our framework for developing the plan. And that's really all. It's very brief, and I will take any questions if you all have any. Otherwise, I will pass it over.
We'll start with Alderman Rainey, then Alderman Braithwaite.
Thanks.
Can you tell us, in the last five years, how many properties in Evanston have been demolished?
Well, that's a good question. It's been about five or so a year that we've received demolition tax for. I don't know if you have a, yeah, it's been about five years. There was about five in 2018, and that's just been kind of the average over the years.
And were those properties that we acquired, no, those were not properties, what properties were they?
Typically, what they've been...
I know we demolished perfecto cleaners, or somebody demolished it.
Yeah, I don't know all the addresses and properties off the top of my head. Some of them were just residential that were blighted. Some were properties where they tore down and built something new in place. They've just been kind of all over as far as what's been demolished and what's gone in place.
Can you give me a list of those? I really want to know what property, what money was generated. And is it going, are they talking about an increase in the tax across the board? All properties are going to have the same tax?
We are talking about increasing the tax across the board. One of the issues we've been weighing is looking at the property value of a building that was torn down compared to the property value of what goes in place.
The property that was torn down, does it have any value?
Sometimes they have a little bit of value.
You know where I'm going with this. It seems like such a waste of time and effort to worry, I mean, it just, I just don't get wasting a lot of time on increasing the demolition tax. But if that's the way they're going, I guess that's okay.
Sure. It hasn't been updated since 2007, so we're just really trying to bring it more.
Like $10,000 on a house or something?
Yeah, that's what it currently is. $10,000 for a house, or $3,000 per unit if it's multifamily, or whichever is greater.
Okay. I mean, we haven't demolished any 24-unit buildings in this town.
Not that I'm aware of, not in recent history, yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Braithwaite, then Alderman Wilson.
I think Alderman Rainey addressed my questions. I was going to ask a similar question. I don't, and every once in a while, not often, that $10,000 sometimes becomes a barrier to, you know, for properties now, all of a sudden, they're just an eyesore that stay in some of our wards. So I just hope that you continue to think carefully about that, as well as, I can't remember, Sarah, we do have a waiver process for that, and I hope you don't mess with that, so.
Yeah, there is an exception for blighted properties and things that need to be torn down. They don't have to pay the fee.
I just think we ought to start demolishing more stuff.
Alderman Wilson.
Well, and I know that I've asked about this particular issue before, but one of the concerns I had was with the idea of tearing down market-rate affordable housing. So that's, you know, when I asked about this previously, if the economy, you know, when the economy will trend better, then it makes it more appealing to tear down market-rate affordable housing and replace it with higher-value properties. So to the extent that it can be kind of tied to the removal of market-rate affordable housing and the value of the replacement property, that's kind of what I had in mind. So if you're putting up, you know, a million-dollar house on, you know, something where there were like, you know, three ranch homes, you know, the $10,000 certainly wouldn't be a barrier to that kind of a markup on the value of the property.
Yeah, I was just referencing my ward with that.
Alderman Fisk.
I wish I had a $3 million. I'm in the 5th Ward.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to go back to square one for just a minute, because I'm, we've been doing this for so long, I don't remember the numbers. But I'd like you to give me, via email is fine, the number of affordable units that we have in Evanston, whether we're meeting the goal of affordable units, how we compare to other cities. In terms of other cities in the area, I don't want to go too far afield in the U.S., but comparable cities. I just, I need a reminder of that. I remember numbers from when we started the conversation a long time ago, but simply don't recall. So if you could send that off to us, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
And maybe you guys could just report, because I know it just came out, Savannah and Sarah, a recent report on the affordable housing in Evanston, and actually it ticked up, if I remember. Could you just, while everybody's here, just let us know what that was?
Sarah Flax, Housing and Grants Manager. You're right, Mayor Hagerty, there was a change of about two percentage points when the analysis is done by IDA for, to comply with the state's requirement of 10% of housing being affordable to households either at, for ownership that are 80% or below, or for rental, it's at 60% or below. And we ticked up from about 15% to about 17% according to that. Now, one of the real challenges that, I mean, this is a substantially less dramatic change from the prior reading, where we lost our 3,300 units, and they're in the period of time from about 2000, whatever it was, till the one that was at the 15%. I don't remember the exact dates. But it's very difficult to compare the numbers that were done based on, prior to the use of American Community Survey. Now, all of this information is done by the American Community Survey, using American Community Survey data. So the current survey was used was 2012, 13, 14, 15, 16. So keep in mind, when we see affordability for this period, it's already, we have, we're two years past that, more than two years past that, and are seeing increases. And one of the things that we pointed out in other analyses of affordability, that asks people what they're paying now. And one of the things that doesn't really ask is what the market is, you know, what the market rate of getting housing, whether it's buying a house or whether it's renting a house currently. So that's, you know, I don't see a great deal of importance to that change of 2%, given the way the statistics are done. I mean, I'd like to think we did a lot, but we still have an enormous percentage of people living that are extremely housing cost burden and housing cost burden, so I wish I could feel better about that.
Indeed. Nobody's going to claim mission accomplished here and say we don't need to do anything else with affordable housing. Alderman Fisk may have another question.
Yeah. Sarah, did I hear you correctly that the state standard is 10% of units is the standard that meet the affordable requirements, and we're at 17%?
Well, that's their requirement theoretically.
Yeah, but did I understand you correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So we're at 17%. And I want to pick up on something that Alderman Ru Simmons said some time ago, and I absolutely agree with, is that, you know, part of what we're, what we ignore in our discussions is what property tax and other taxes, the burden those are putting on the ability of people to stay in their houses. And, yeah, thank you. We absolutely have to look at that, and that's, you know, one of the things we talk about in terms of economic development and trying to keep a lid on property taxes. But it's important to this discussion, I think, really going forward. So I'm glad we're doing as well as we are, clearly. We need to do more, we can do more, but I think this is a bigger discussion than we're having. My ward, as you know, is, has a lot of seniors in it, and people who are absolutely struggling to stay in their houses. And I hear them all the time. And it's property taxes. One thing I do want to note is that, remember, the 10% is applied against all communities. Nobody looks at the incomes of the people you have living in your community, which is exactly what you're talking about. We have way more than 10% of our population that is below 60 and 80%. So that's why this 15 or 17% means our job isn't done. Right.
Stay up there, and we may have another question. Alderman Ru Simmons?
Thank you. I want to make sure, or give a referral, if it's not already included, that staff is working with... is working with local lending partners to find mortgage products for our moderate income families to own homes. And that we are also working on ways to keep people that are in affordable houses in their homes. So, the Cook County property taxes, I don't know what we can do about that, but if we could look at, at one point, we had a weatherization grant or other sort of support that will help with the overhead and the expense of homeownership. I think that's something that I definitely want us to focus on because of the declining numbers of minority homeownership here in town.
We are in fact working with, we're going to try to get IDA in for a program on their loan products. And we're meeting with Wind Trust and various other banks just to find out what all they're doing. In the packet is that full chart of all the different things and we didn't want to try to go through all of them or you'd be here all night, but absolutely, those things are on the agenda and we'll keep them on.
I'm also requesting that financial literacy generally is in there for those that are not ready maybe today, but they are working on habits that will get them ready for homeownership.
Can you give us, can you just give us a quick update on the larger project that Richmond O'Keo came and spoke about and that the Housing Authority of Cook County was exploring? Yeah, is it 1900?
We were hoping to get them back at this meeting to give an update, but what they are still doing is exploring financing for that. Because what, again, their plan was to look at three different income levels. They would have some share of housing that would be public housing level, so people are paying only 30% of their income and the rest is picked up by the Housing Authority. But then also that middle market, as we're calling it, that may be 60 to 80% of area median, where it's for people who have income but can't afford full market rate, and then some market rate units. So, we'll check in with them and hopefully we can get them back in the near future.
Great, thank you. All right, seeing no more lights, is there anyone that would like to move this motion to accept and place this on file?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
All right, so, SP one, Affordable Housing Work Plan Progress to Date is Accepted and Placed on File on nine to zero vote. Alderman Ravel, can you take us to SP two?
Right. I requested staff to develop information for us to consider requiring owner occupancy in properties where they're going to be renting either the ADU or the main house. And I certainly appreciate the voluminous memo that was in our packet. I, and frankly, the, the issue is a lot more complicated than I had envisioned when I first suggested that we look at this. So, the memo mentions two reasons for requiring owner occupancy. One is to maintain the character of single-family residential neighborhoods and the second is to ensure the high level of maintenance of the property. But there's really a third, very important reason in my view for thinking about requiring owner occupancy, and that's to discourage speculation in residential properties that can make housing less, less affordable. And that's also my rationale for encouraging this body to consider an owner occupancy requirement for vacation rentals. We keep talking about wanting to discuss that and I'm expecting that we'll get to that eventually this year. And so, looking at the concerns that the staff raised in terms of how to implement an owner occupancy requirement, one of the most difficult, I thought, is the concern about whether an additional requirement of owner occupancy will deter property owners who already rent out both the main house and the ADU from coming forward to register their rental property. Because after all, we'd be asking them to come forward to basically show that they're being illegal. So, I guess I have a question for staff about this and it may be something that, not at the tip of their tongues, but is there a way to, that one could register an existing investor-owned property with an ADU as a legal non-conforming use? Is that something? Because I, because I'm assuming we probably have a number of existing, you know, non-owner occupied properties with ADUs.
We have a few, but it's very difficult because of the lack of real flexibility in the way we can search our database of, of rental registration. So, what we had to do is look for properties that had half and things like that and then try to figure out if both units were rented. And there are some. And I think that, of course, we could make something legal non-conforming and we could grandfather it. That's exactly, the thing I think that's challenging is I think that most of these are likely to be ones that are already grandfathered because they were allowed to rent up way before anybody else was. So, I mean, it's kind of how do we segregate and allow some to do it and others not? And they are, as best I recall from looking at the list, virtually all large properties with original coach houses. So, you know, it also, I don't know if that's something that should be differentiated on where people can do it just based on historical, what's been allowed. That's the issue I would see with that, I think.
Right, okay. I guess I'm, certainly have heard the very eloquent public testimony that we had this evening about the concern that doing this would discourage creation of more auxiliary dwelling units, which I think we're really committed to coming up with ways to encourage more of these as a, as a really wonderful way to develop some more affordable housing units and also to help homeowners be able to stay in their homes because they can help, they can have an extra income to help offset the cost of home maintenance. I, I'm happy to enter, you know, listen to what some of my colleagues have to say, but I do kind of then have a, sort of a, kind of a follow-up proposal. Do my follow-
Why don't you move, move, move this for introduction? Let's see if we got a second and then we'll continue.
Even if I'm thinking that, that it's not going to go anywhere.
Well, I just, I guess I just want to follow protocol to get, to get us properly discussing this. So, does anyone want to move this? If, if not, okay, so Alderman Fisk will move it. Is there a second?
I'll second it then.
Okay, so, it's open for discussion. We've got Alderman Rainey, then Alderman Wilson.
Well, I, I'm going to just start off opposing this and say that there, there has to become a time when we stop considering tenants as second-class citizens. And that's, when I read through this, that's how I felt. And I remember years ago when I was an activist in the Tenants Organization of Evanston, a ninth ward alderman by the name of Don Bora said to me, you know, and when you become a homeowner, then you'll become a real citizen in Evanston. And I thought, you know, that, that's just the way I always felt as a tenant back in the day. And all, the undercurrent of this whole discussion by AARP and the, the business of tenants don't take care of property like homeowners do and you really, you have to be suspicious. I mean, there's a huge rental market in this town and tenants take very good care of their property. And I, I think that, you know, we have to preserve the, we have to preserve the dignity of R1 districts. Well, there are a lot of beautiful homes in this town that are being rented for three, four, $5,000 and they're being well-cared-for. And people are making a lot of money renting those homes. So, I really think we have to disabuse ourselves of the notion that if, if the home, if the accessory dwelling unit or the main home is not being occupied by the homeowner, then the whole place is going to go to hell in a handbasket, because that's not going to happen. And if it does, shame, shame on, shame on the owner and the city is there to inspect and if, you know, if there's indications that the place is being run down, we'll just lower the boom on them and, and, and deal with it. But I, I don't think that, you know, we have plenty of rentals in this town that are beautifully maintained. And so, I mean, we're not requiring, like somebody said, a, a two-flat or a three-flat to be homeowner occupied or a townhouse to be owner occupied. And I think we're going a little off the deep end with this amendment. So, I would encourage us to defeat it. I, I feel differently about short-term rentals. I, I feel differently about that. I'm willing to discuss that.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. We got Alderman Wilson, then Alderman Fleming.
Thank you. And Alderman Rainey actually covered a lot of what I was going to say, but I also have concerns that something like this would also create, it would create an environment where the sophisticated investor would be the one who has the ability to kind of game the system, you know, to create an LLC or, you know, hire somebody to, maybe not hire, but give a rental discount, whatever. But it's, it's going to be the sophisticated investors that are going to figure out the ways around it. And I don't think that's what we want to be accomplishing. And, and to part of what Alderman Rainey was saying, any given individual, they're either going to care for their living environment or they're not. And, you know, whether you own your house or you rent it, that comes down to the person, not really the, the form of their living. So, I don't, I don't, I can't support the, support the change.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Fleming.
I'll just say ditto.
Okay, all right. Did you want to add something else or that was, I like the ditto. Okay, that was quick. Okay, good. All right, seeing no more conversation on this. This was move for introduction with a second. City Clerk, could you take the roll, please? On SP two, this is SP two ordinance 1-0-19 amending the rental registration include owner occupancy with rental of accessory dwelling units in zoning districts with single-family residents.
Alderman Fleming.
No.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson.
No.
Alderman Rue Simmons.
No.
Alderman Suffolkin. Alderman Ravel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Okay. Ordinance 1-0-19 fails to pass the Evanston City Council on a six to three vote. Failed, fails to pass. There were three people in favor of it, six people against it. So, that does not move forward for, move forward. Alderman Ravel?
So, I had an additional idea to throw out. Because in some parts of Evanston, it's not so much that there's a, that, there's a feeling that rental properties are not well-maintained. I'm not thinking about the physical upkeep of the buildings, but there are certain areas where there are nuisance properties because of loud parties and et cetera. So, and it doesn't, and from the emails that I've seen, our nuisance premises ordinance has not been an effective means of addressing the problems with some of these properties. So, it seems to me that our annual renewal provision that we're now putting in place with our rental properties gives us an opportunity to review properties when they come up for renewal to see if there have been any complaints lodged, any police citations or whatever. And so, that would give us an opportunity to-
Deny?
And here's where I'm not saying, I know exactly what the solution is, but I'm, I guess I'm asking staff to maybe think about this some more and come back to us with something. But just as we have in our vacation rental ordinance, we have a provision that when they come back for renewal of their vacation rental license, we say, provided that the property didn't receive any citations in the previous year or something, in which, and I, so I'm wondering if we could have something like that in our rental-
Oh, yeah.
-ordinance, just as a way for some kind of opportunity for review when they come up for renewal.
Just for clarification, would this then apply to all ADUs or only to ones that aren't owner occupied? I'll ask you to come back to us with some thoughts on that.
Well, I think I'll have to spend some time with the legal department.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah. I mean, yeah, I assume it would be something that would be applicable to everybody. Most people, there wouldn't be any, any complaint on record and the renewal would just breeze right on through, but.
I do just want to comment that there would always be, in anything we have to think about, sometimes there are calls for service and things like that that have nothing to do with the tenant that is protected by fair housing that we always have to be-
Of course.
Very aware, of course.
We got lots of light, lots of lights up here. All right, I, well, I apologize if I don't get the order exactly right. Alderman Rue Simmons and-
Thank you.
His first, and then Braithwaite.
So, I support that concern and second that referral, not only for the accessory dwellings, but looking at our nuisance premise ordinance just generally and how we are enforcing it. I, I too have found it to be an ineffective tool to get landlords to up their property standards or manage their tenants that have regular service calls for various nuisances. So, if we could look at what we are either not enforcing or how we can make some adjustments to the policy, not just on the accessory dwellings, but generally.
Great, thank you, Alderman Rue Simmons. Alderman Braithwaite?
Yeah, thank you very much, Alderman Ravel. I mean, my ears perked up as soon as you made that referral. And so, just that we're clear, because I see this as being actually more effective than nuisance ordinance. I mean, when we've, we've revisited that probably at least three times since I've been on council and we really haven't found a way to give it the teeth that, you know, our staff, police, et cetera, need to stop a landlord who we've had repeated issues with over the time. So, I just want to be clear with what you're saying, that annually now, we're asking staff to come back with a tool that would pretty much restrict landlords. Are we saying from operating as a landlord, not the ability to correct rent? I mean, this is, I like the referral, I just want clarity on it.
Well, I, I think we'd have to have standards to apply in the review, so it'd be an objective. It wouldn't just be an automatic.
Yeah, we get it. I mean, I think, but again, that's why I'm seeking clarity, because it has to-
Right.
The nuisance ordinance doesn't work for us and so I don't want to make it too complicated. I like the component of property standards, calls for services.
Police complaint.
Noise complaints. Anyone else want to add a few? Garbage?
Property standards.
Property standards, yeah, all those issues.
City Manager?
Yes, Mayor Alderman Braithwaite, members of the council, we'd be happy to come back. I, I think at this point, we'll take the referral, we'll either bring this back the next time we talk about affordable housing, because looking at the calendar, looking for a free date.
I would actually love to prioritize this, that's why I'm, I'm excited about it. So, as soon as it's available, if staff is clear on what we're asking.
Well, why don't you let us take a first crack at this and then come back? And my guess is that the Law Department will want to advise what we can and can't do in broad general terms. So, my guess is that we could come back in 30 or 45 days with-
Absolutely.
With a, with a report on where things stand and then have the council have further discussion. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, I, I do have some preliminary concerns and so, 45 days, 60 days would be preferable, but that'd be fine, whenever the calendar-
We got a couple more aldermen, aldermen that want to talk on this topic. Alderman Rainey, then Alderman Fleming.
Well, I've used the nuisance premises ordinance twice. And the reason why it probably doesn't work is because no one's invoked it on a particular landlord. And I will say, and it's public knowledge, that Sargon Isaac was the very first person that had it invoked on him. And we've done nothing but reward him for various things since then. So, that's why it doesn't work. I mean, it's got relatives who are attorneys and, you know, once you, once you go for a certain length of time without violating, you know, doing a violation, then you're, you're released from, you know, the, the sanctions. And so, but what you're talking about is in the nuisance premise ordinance and all you have, you just need to invoke it.
It's a tough check, I mean, it's a tough list to check.
No, it's not.
All right, we'll talk about it after-
But you just have to use it.
Let's see what Alderman Fleming has to say. Alderman Fleming.
So, I, I have some concerns and I guess my concerns are, one, if we're going to do whatever this is, and I don't necessarily have these issues in my ward, but what I, and I would assume the Law Department would say we have to apply it to all- I would assume the Law Department would say we have to apply it to all rentals, not just accessory dwelling units.
Correct.
I would be concerned about those women or men who are in domestic violence situations.
Not included.
I understand, but they would be, if they would be fearful to call the police, because all they know or have heard is that, just hear me out, people don't always read the fine print. But if I hear that, you know, my landlord might not rent to me because there's been too many calls of the police...
Yeah, we're...
Okay, I'm throwing out there what people might hear. I understand it's not covered, but I don't want to put someone, we would have to be very clear in marketing this, however it went about. And then, I guess, I would just want to make clear, or make sure there's clarity, this would be for the landlord who's with the property standards issues, but it sounds like with these other folks, and maybe Alderman Ravel is talking about, is this idea that you have some college students party, and so, I'm calling the police because there's too much noise. And I guess I would be hesitant to then tell the landlord, you know, you can never rent this unit out again, because, you know, you rented it once to some guys who were having a party. I mean, hopefully, the police can go and break the party up, and if there's no illegal activity, people should be able to remain within their lease. So, I guess, so those are my initial concerns, just with this, and I'm sure the legal department would handle that, but I would hate for us to craft this whole big thing, and then we find out we're, you know, at risk of violating something. I'm definitely all about property standards, but I don't want this to be something where, you know, because the landlord rented to somebody who ended up not being a good tenant, they're now at risk of not being able to rent their unit again, you know, because their tenant was an idiot.
Right. Thank you, Alderman Fleming. So, you know, lots of complexities, right, with this issue. City Manager and the staff have it, and they'll really put some thought behind this and come back to us. We're going to move on now to SP three. I'm going to ask Alderman Nguyen if she would move this.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. SP three is...
I don't know if your mic's on.
It is on. I do want to...
Is it your light, I think? Your light, that's what he said, not your mic, your light.
Okay. I do want to say, I have some thoughts about this after I...
Yep. I'll go to you first, after you introduce it, and we get a second.
SP three is Resolution 10R-19, authorizing City Manager to initiate a request for qualifications and request for proposal process for the repurposing of city-owned real property located at 506 South Boulevard.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, Alderman.
So, this, I do want to talk about this for a few minutes, and I have some thoughts about what the, how we should proceed. It has been a concern in Evanston for a very long time about what we should do with some of our properties that are not heavily used. And at different times, we've looked for our parking lots that may not be, in some people's minds, used to their highest and best used. So, over, over the years, we have looked at various parking lots to determine whether they are potentially developable. Overwhelmingly, our parking lots are very heavily used, if not waiting-listed and oversold sometimes. But Lot 1, which is at South Boulevard and Hymen Avenue, has historically been very much underused. And I recognize there are folks here who do use it, but over, over time, it has, I believe, never been used more than 50%. So, it has been, it is a lot that we have looked at in terms of potential development for affordable housing. That we've, immediately next door are four townhouses that are low-income or Section 8 housing for, and they've been there for probably 25, 30, more than that, 30 years, that are owned by Cook County Housing, CHAC. Yeah, thank you. And so, one of the ideas that has been raised, and it was discussed at the Transportation and Parking Committee in July, is potentially developing both sites, both the city parking lot, and redeveloping the four townhouses that are on the, on the Cook County-owned parcel. And including in this, the low-income housing that is currently there, that is all multi, that's all family, and potentially some more, and then having some affordable housing, which we think of more of as workforce housing, and then market rate. The site is large enough for a small development. It backs up on, as everyone here knows, it backs up on the cemetery, and you would, and there's a potential for something very positive happening. But I recognize that a number of the neighbors here don't have enough information about this. And so, what I would want to do is have a neighborhood meeting with all of the neighbors, many of you who I know, who I want to have a conversation with, and hear about what your concerns are. We've met many times over the years about issues on South Boulevard and the alley. And before we move forward with a request for qualifications, I want to make sure that this is really a project that the community can support and can understand, because as Mr. O'Dwyer said, you know, affordable housing is definitely a value that we have here in Evanston, but it needs to be done carefully. And this location has some really good potential, but it needs to be done in a way that the community understands, where we still recognize what the needs are in the community for the parking facility, and what are the ideas and potential that could be done with this lot, so that people in the community don't, I think there's a lot of misinformation. I've gotten a couple of phone calls from people over the weekend that, that were very alarmed. And I think what we need to do is slow this down and have a neighborhood meeting to discuss this in much, much more detail. And what I would ask then, because I think this is a very good spot to have some affordable housing. It's half a block from the South Boulevard stop. It's not far from, I mean, because it's the L stop there, you, it's not far from grocery stores on Chicago Avenue. It's very close to St. Francis Hospital, which might, which could easily be a workplace. It's within the Lincoln School District. It has, you know, many positives to it. It's a block from a large city park, Magallan Park. And it is an asset that we've had that hasn't been well-used by the community. It has been used, I recognize, by the neighbors, but not to a potential that, that I think would be very good for all of us, and good for the neighborhood as well. We have a remarkable assortment of uses within a one or two-block area there, including multifamily, law offices, a business, a warehouse, a, the cemetery's property there, as well as low-income housing and a city parking lot. So, all of these things need to be put together and understood, and how, if we do a development there, what, what would work best for the community, and best for all of Evanston. So, what I would like to do is, and I'm not sure what the, procedurally, what the right thing would be to do, would be to hold this until a later PND meeting, and during which time, we would have a community meeting to discuss this in much more detail with the staff, before we would move forward for a request for qualifications.
Second.
All right, I got lots of lights on here.
If we, if it's been held in second, then we can't...
Then we don't, okay.
Unless we...
Yes.
I don't know that you could hold it a special meeting.
Oh, you can.
Or look.
Rule 18.12 indicates that special order of business cannot be held over to the next regular meeting.
It can be tabled.
But it can be tabled.
It can be tabled.
May I, I'd like to table this until...
For a special order of business.
Thank you. I'd forgotten that rule. I'd like to table this to, does it have to be a date certain?
No.
Okay.
It says, "may be tabled any subsequent meeting," it indicates.
Okay. I'd like to table this until a PND meeting in March, no sooner than March, possibly the second meeting in March. And by then, I'll, we'll have had organized a community meeting with everyone who's here to discuss this.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
So, there's a point of order for Alderman Fisk?
Yeah. I'm not sure this can go to PND as a special order of business. I think it has to come back, doesn't it, as a special order of business?
I don't know that we have a rule. I don't know that we have a rule that says that. There may be practice, but I don't know that we have a rule. So, it's the council's discretion.
Well, I'd like to table it to the second meeting in March, to whatever, whether it should be a special order of business, or to PND, whichever the legal department determines is the correct place for it. Thank you.
Okay.
Do we have to vote on a table?
So, can I, now, because of that, can I open it up? I've got two other lights on, if folks want...
I just think it should be...
But he's opening up for discussion, Clerk.
Yeah.
I mean, it's been...
Oh, it needs to be voted on.
Oh, this needs to be voted on.
And I think the table should, we should determine the venue now, in this session, as opposed to doing it at a later session.
You mean, the venue or the meeting?
Yeah, I know. So, I think that should be determined in the motion.
It's going to be at a city council meeting, isn't it?
Okay. Yeah, just to clarify.
Right.
All right. So, we've got to take a vote on this, but can I, Michelle, can I take the other comments before we do that, for discussion? Okay. So, Alderman Sufferton, and then Alderman Fleming.
I guess this will be clarified. You are saying, hold this until March?
Second meeting in March.
Second meeting in March. Okay. That's, that was my question. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Fleming?
Okay. I'm not on PND. Is it coming back to council?
It's coming back to the full council, I think.
Okay, that's one question. And I guess that my public statement is that...
Sorry, there isn't a second meeting. I was just looking at the calendar. There's either March 11th or the 18th, but the second meeting traditionally is the 25th. We don't have because of the city spring break.
Oh, that's right. Okay. So, can we say...
Do you want the 11th?
No, March 18th.
March 18th, okay. I don't know what we're discussing on the 18th.
Can we just go to April 8?
Yes, we can go to April 8. Yes, thank you.
Do you want to say second again?
Okay, thank you, Don.
Okay. So, you seconded the April 8th, City...
Can I finish my statement?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So, two things. One, I'm on transportation. This is not in my ward, but it's close enough to my ward that I have been announcing it since whenever we started talking about it, to just educate my citizens about this. I guess my concern and what I, my hope is that we still come back with the RFP, that we don't come back and say, it can be affordable housing with A through Z limitations, because, you know, people want to park their cars. Not that I'm anti-car, but I get concerned sitting here when we talk about, let's increase affordable housing, let's do these things, but at the same time, we're talking about, and I know you're not saying that, but as a community, we're also saying, let's make these restrictions, or I, you know, I want to park my car, or I like my green space, or whatever it is. So, my hope is that after the community meeting, people will have a clear understanding, and we still will move forward, because we don't, we're not even saying that this is RFP, we're not talking about height or anything. And I get concerned that in community meeting, people will come back and say, yes, I support this, but it needs to look like X, Y, and Z. And so, before we even go to the RFP process, we're making limitations on it. So, my hope is that that does not happen.
Yeah. I hear your concerns. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Fleming. All right. So, we have a motion that was seconded to table Resolution 10-R-19 to the City Council meeting to be held on April 8th. City Clerk, could you take the role, please? I just need a, a voice vote will do? All right. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, opposed.
Okay. So, this item, Resolution 10R-19, has been tabled on an eight to one vote to April 8th. Okay. We're going to move on now to SP four. Alderman Rainey, could you, this is for action, can you introduce and move this motion?
I would be delighted. Mr. Mayor and City Council, this is SP four. It's Illinois Housing Development Authority. It's a request for support of senior housing development. This is a 60-unit building that Evergreen Realty and the Council for Jewish Elderly are combining forces to build. And I think we have David Block and his team here to make a presentation. They're asking for support, a support letter to go to IDA. They have an application that must be submitted by the 15th. The very best news is that they submitted a pre-application and received overwhelming support from IDA for that application, which is about the best news any developer can receive from IDA, which gives us great deal of hope that this could conceivably happen. This is not an approval of the project, but it is a letter of support to IDA saying that this community is behind this project, and I certainly hope we can get behind it. And also, asking for the commitment of affordable housing funds, which we have in our, in our account. David?
Is there, let me, before we go to David, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. All right. Go ahead if you want to introduce him, Alderman.
This is the Evanston City Council. We've had, by the way, we've had two community meetings regarding this. One specifically invitation to the neighborhood directly behind the commonly-known Dairy Queen, and then a ward meeting where this was majorly presented. So, we've done a lot of work on this. Go ahead.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Clerk, members of the City Council, Mr. City Manager. My name is David Block. I'm the Director of Development for the Evergreen Real Estate Group, and I love Evanston. I've lived here for about 13 years. So, this project is near and dear to my heart. I would like to introduce my partners on this project. I've got three folks here from CJ Senior Life, formerly known as the Council for Jewish Elderly. You guys could stand up and back here. I've got Dan Levin, and I've got Tom Lockwood, sorry, Dan, what, Fagan, sorry. I'm thinking of somebody else. Dan Fagan, Tom Lockwood, and Laura Poehoff, here from CJ Senior Life. And they operate the facility that is now in the old A&amp;P at 1015 Howard Street. It is used as an adult-day services facility. So, it is adults with dementia and various other needs associated with aging, and they run a spectacular program. They serve a lot of Evanston residents, and they bring people from Chicago to that, to that facility as well. So, I wanted to take a little bit of time to go over what it is we're proposing to do here, and then open it up for, for your questions. See if the clicker... There we go. So, our team is heavily Evanston-based. The one person that I wasn't able to have here today is our architect, Robert Natke, who, his firm is Urban Works. He and his wife Patricia have lived in Evanston for 25 years. CJ Senior Life has run this facility on Howard Street for a number of years, and our in-house construction company will be involved in this as well. Just very briefly, a little bit about who we are as a primarily affordable housing developer. We are a firm that's been around for about 20 years. We've developed a number of fairly well-known projects in and around Chicagoland, including this multi-award-winning project, the adaptive reuse of the former St. Charles Hospital out in Aurora. Project that you may know if you drive by the intersection of Western and Pratt in Rogers Park. One of three new libraries, combined with affordable senior housing, that was an initiative of Mayor Emanuel and the Chicago Housing Authority. We are developing two of those three. So, this one is scheduled to open in about three weeks. The one on Elston in the old Irving Park neighborhood actually had its grand opening just before the polar vortex, and so, that's a photo there of about 400 people that joined the mayor to cut that ribbon. We manage about 8,000 units in 13 states, a number of properties in and around Chicago. None in Evanston so far, but we do manage properties in Rogers Park, and many of them on the north side of Chicago. CJ Senior Life opened in 1972. They were beginning with three services. Homemaker services to help seniors age in place, care management to help coordinate social services for seniors who needed care from a variety of providers, and meal delivery for seniors who had trouble caring for themselves and going shopping and feeding themselves. And so, their services are really geared towards helping seniors... services are really geared towards helping seniors age gracefully in their residences. They operate more than 35 different programs that are both residential and based in the community, 20,000 clients annually, and they're actually also in the affordable housing business. In fact, the way that Evergreen got to know CJE is that we purchased two of their buildings in Rogers Park, and we have recapitalized those buildings and provided some much-needed repairs through a tax credit process. See, I'm not going to go through this in detail, but CJE provided some, some information about their demographics, serving Evanston residents, and you'll see that in their variety of programs, there is a fairly large percentage of clients that are served from Evanston, the adult day service program, almost 30% of those clients are in Evanston, the home-delivered meals, more than 30% of them are serving Evanston residents, and the transportation program, you know, almost 15% are served by the buses, you see, the shalom buses. Urban Works, local, locally-owned architecture firm with a lot of experience in affordable housing, won some awards for pretty wonderful projects that they've done. So here's the site, and as the Alderman mentioned, it is the CJE facility at 1015 Howard Street, and that includes the fenced-in parking area, where you see the buses parked, as well as the building there with the mural on it, and we also have the former Dairy Queen property under contract, so the project will encompass that entire site. Unfortunately, or, or not, we'll be demolishing the Dairy Queen building. The development will be 60 units that are age and income restricted apartments, they'll be affordable for households earning up to about $40,000 annually, with rents that range from just under $700 to just under $1,000 a month, but there'll also be some units where tenants will pay no more than 30% of their income. So it's divided between what in other contexts might be called workforce housing or affordable apartments, where there's a fixed but affordable rent, and units that are subsidized with rental assistance to allow even deeper income targeting for seniors who are, maybe only have a small social security check or a small pension check as their only source of income. It's a mix of one and two bedroom units, it's primarily one-bedroom units, it's got about 10% two-bedroom units. One of the interesting things about this project is, right now, CJE is tax-exempt because it's a nonprofit service organization, the Dairy Queen property pays about $10,000 annually in taxes, we are anticipating that the entire project will be taxable, and so the taxes will increase on that entire property from about $10,000 annually to about $70,000 annually. So why are we looking at this now, and why are we looking at this site? Well, obviously, there's been a lot of discussion here at the council about affordable housing, there's been a lot of discussion about ongoing investments on Howard Street, and I think putting those two concepts together is really a recipe for success. Just some very quick pictures of the design, see if my laser works here, so this little gray building here, it's about a one-and-a-half-story building, is the existing adult daycare facility, and then the remainder of the site is parking lot, and the Dairy Queen is over here, so we're proposing a four-story building, this is a plan view of it, and there are actually three curb cuts on the site right now, there is one curb cut serving the existing, the existing CJE building, and then there are two curb cuts serving the former Dairy Queen. We will reduce those three curb cuts down to two curb cuts, so we think there's a traffic benefit to it. We're proposing a configuration of the site where there will be actually two parking entrances, so there'll be a parking entrance here, where you kind of go in and under a bridge for part of the property, and a ramp that goes up and down this way, and then on the east side of the property, there'll be a separate entrance going down into a separate parking structure. This is because the parking lot that is now at the CJE property is fairly heavily utilized, both by the buses that are there, by the CJE staff, and by the visitors, the families of the clients of the programs. So since we're adding, we are adding a new apartment building to this project, we really thought it was essential to essentially double the parking capacity of the site. It's not a cheap solution to do it this way, which is part of the rationale for our financial request to the city of Evanston, but we thought in the context of this project it was necessary. So we're anticipating about 100 to 120 construction jobs, there'll be two permanent positions at the building, plus retaining all of the staff who are now working at the CJE facility, and these are, this is an independent living building, so even though these are lower-income seniors, we're anticipating that they are very likely to be active seniors, and they will live on Howard Street, they'll eat at Howard Street restaurants, they'll probably take the bus and come to downtown Evanston, and go shopping on Howard Street and elsewhere, so we think this is a real contributor to, to the Evanston community. We also have as, really a part of our operating philosophy as a company, a real commitment to outreach to minority and women-owned contractors, actually, our architect is a minority and women-owned firm, so as we move toward construction, we will hold some outreach fairs for potential contractors who will be involved in this project. Little bit about the schedule, we need to file our application with IDA, and we should know, the application is due in about two weeks, we'll know probably by May or June whether we're successful. It will take us through the rest of this year to close on our financing, we'll be under construction for about a year, maybe 12, maybe 14 months or so, complete this project by early 2021, start leasing the project, and by, by summer of 2021, we anticipate the building will be fully occupied. We're also property manager, as I mentioned, we have a fairly holistic approach to property management, we're concerned about the safety and security and satisfaction of our residents, we're big believers in community accountability, and so when Alderman Rainey suggested that we have neighborhood meetings to talk about this project, we jumped at that opportunity because we actually believe that the best projects are those that have community input, that help shape them. There's a lot of regulations attached to these kinds of projects, and so we have staff members who are dedicated to that, and then we do have investors and shareholders in this project, and we're financially accountable to them. Obviously, we're, we're all bound by federal fair housing law, by requirements that the IDA, the Illinois Housing Development Authority imposes on this, we are willing to create a preference for Evanston residents in this to the extent that the fair housing law allows us to do that. So we will work with Johanna, and we'll work with Sarah, and we'll work with the law department here to help shape that policy in a way that, that makes sense. Basic leasing policy, we do a fair amount of checking on our potential residents, so we check their criminal and credit history, we check their prior landlord history, we do income verification because, you know, legally, they can't be above a certain income level, that's, that's pretty critical to these kinds of projects. We inspect these units, we're anticipating that the Cook County Housing Authority will likely inspect some of them, and then we know that Evanston has your own rental registration program as well. So in summary, just very quickly, we see a number of benefits to the city of Evanston for this project. This will serve a greater number of seniors at lower income levels than your inclusionary housing ordinance could by itself by requiring 10% of units in market rate developments that are moving forward. The CJE facility is a wonderful service, and we've heard from family members of clients who have had positive experience as they age and have, you know, difficulties with, with problems like dementia, but it's an aging building, and it needs some repairs, and this project will help facilitate those. It'll put an exempt property back on the tax rolls, we will continue the ongoing revitalization of Howard Street, and again, as I mentioned, it's largely an Evanston-based team. Just very quickly, sources and uses of funds here, it's about a $23 million project, as mentioned in the memo, we are requesting about $2 million from the city of Evanston through a combination of your federal home allocation and your existing affordable housing funds that have been committed through the downtown projects, that leverages about $11 and a half dollars. For each dollar committed to this project, it leverages an $11 and a half, $11 and a half dollars through private equity coming in through the sale of the tax credits and through other funding from IDA. So it's about $33,000 a unit that we're requesting in, in city help with the project. Our next steps, we're going to continue working on this, we need to do this as a planned development, so we are beginning the zoning process now, so I'm certain that we'll be coming before the DAPR, and then we'll be coming before you as we go through that process. We need to submit our full application to IDA in the coming weeks, and continue our communication with the neighborhood. So I thank you for your time and attention, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you for that presentation, Alderman Fisk.
Thanks, I'm sorry, did you just say this will be a planned development?
Yes.
Did I hear that? Okay, so that, that's going to go to DAPR and through the, through the regular process. Is there anywhere on site that there is any green space or park, or any place for residents to go out and garden, trees?
It's a, you know, it's a tight, it's a very urban site, but what we have here on the second floor is actually a roof deck back here, and we're putting that on the second floor because if you've been in the existing CJE facility right now, if you come in the front door, which is, come on, laser, which is here, and you go into the facility, there is a little patio, a tiny little patio that is literally, I don't know, about seven feet by 20 feet, and it's fenced off from the alley, it's not a great space for the clients of that program, and so this deck will be much larger than that, and the intent is that it will be shared between the CJE facility and the residents of this building. So it'll be a place, I don't know if they're going to be used together, we have, we have to work out kind of the regulatory issues of that, but it will serve as, as a green amenity for, for both users of the site.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the site? Alderman Fleming.
I have a couple of questions, and some of these are a little bit for the staff, but when you said you will try to allocate or prioritize Evanston residents best you can, can Sarah, I imagine you can elaborate on that, so can Sarah elaborate on what would be allowed using the funds he mentioned in his rental slide, prioritizing Evanston residents for rental units?
Well, we do have to go through a bunch of discussions on it, but generally, what we have been able to get is, we can do a preference for people who are Evanston, currently live in Evanston, or what we've also added is frequently people who have family who are in Evanston, because we're trying to make, that's part of the thing when you have a senior, and, and people are trying to have seniors who may not live in Evanston right now, but are, you know, related to family members, but we have to work out what preferences they can, how, how strong that preference can be, I don't know if I'm getting to what you're asking, but...
Well, I guess you are, I mean, I'm thinking about the how development, and I forgot what funding source and all that was, but I remember part of the conversation, you know, for me was, you know, they were asking for affordable housing dollars, but they were, whatever their funding source was, was it county or statewide, and they couldn't preference Evanston people, and so on and so forth.
That was a different complication, because that was through the regional housing, all the different housing authorities that put together vouchers, and so it was a little more complicated because of that.
All right, and then my other question was, so the home funds that are listed here as part of this funding package?
Mm-hmm.
If you could just educate me a little bit on why these funds weren't used for last year, and then what are, and what are, I assume we had some allocate, you know, the 280 for this year, that we were going to use that for something?
Well, hopefully, we'll get an allocation this year, we're still waiting, sitting and waiting, but we got about $380,000 last year, in 2018 money, and we allocated some of it for TIBRA, and what we do is, we tend to aggregate, you know, we don't necessarily allocate home funds every year for development projects, in part because if we do, then all we can do is small projects where we're investing in one or two units, and basically, we end up paying almost the full freight, there's no other way to leverage our money. So by aggregating two years of home funds that we use for a development to put against a larger project where we can have more impact, we can actually accomplish much more of our housing goals, the other thing is, home funds are not something you use except with developers that are very experienced with federal regulations, because it's a monster of a program for compliance.
Okay, and then my, I guess, last suggestion, if I can make one to the developer, is, I know, I know, as any rental developer, you have to do credit, and I guess I would hope that you, I'm sure you have experience with this, being a low-income property manager, but, you know, that, you're not lenient, I don't want to say, but obviously, you're considerate of that, right, because people who are low-income maybe don't have, you know, a high credit score, so you don't have to answer that necessarily, but I'm assuming you've already experienced with that, so I'm hoping that that is, will continue to be your practice here. I am disappointed that you will not open a Dairy Queen, I have to tell you.
[laughing]
We have caught the Dairy Queen franchise ourself about that building, and so I, I'm happy to see something go here, I guess in terms of my thoughts of the $2 million that you're asking for, I was really hoping that as a council, we would start this discussion this year moving forward, in terms of what Alderman Rainey proposed last year for more of kind of a voucher system with some of that funds, I know we definitely have a need for senior housing, I'm sure this will be full in just a couple of minutes, but I also was really hoping to move the conversation for some kind of, you know, rental subsidy system, because I know we also have families or single parents or whoever, well, this isn't designed to meet their needs, but they still need housing, affordable housing, and if we use up, you know, potentially all of the money in our affordable housing fund, you know, I'm concerned that those folks still won't benefit, no matter how beautiful this building might be.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming, Alderman Rainey.
Well, I'm not giving up on that program, and this is only one project that the money's going to come from. I wanted to say that I'm very supportive of this, because when you think about it, it would take 600 units in private projects to produce 60 units at 10%, and we're getting this all in one shot, so that's, that was how I justified this. But second of all, to the woman from the Affordable Housing Group who said that we have to deal with people who are NIMBYs, I actually got a letter, the entire council got a letter tonight, from a woman who said, yes, in my backyard, please support this project, so made my day, and she's very supportive, and we are having a neighborhood meeting tomorrow night, three neighborhoods where I'm going to talk about this project, so, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
That's great.
Alderman Fisk.
Sarah, could you just explain to me again how it has worked with us prioritizing Evanston residents for units?
Well, the...
And how successful has that been?
The example I can give you is our NSP scattered site, we literally had people on the waitlist, and if they had the Evanston preference, they went up above other people who didn't, and we, I can't...
And how do you get that Evanston preference? Just by living in Evanston?
By being current residents, or working in Evanston, or having, just, you know, having a family, like, in other words, if you were living in a household, then you were getting your own apartment or something like that, so it's a live and work. And that was actually, I don't have statistics, but it was really very successful in getting Evanston residents prioritized. Now, it didn't always work out for that all, everybody was an Evanston resident, but it means that they come up on the list first before people who are not, don't have the Evanston preference, but one of the things you have to remember about waitlists is, people can come up on the waitlist, and they are not in a position to move or take an apartment at that point, and then they don't necessarily get dropped off, they get another, so there are a lot of reasons people may or may not get an apartment right then.
Right, no, I, I understand, and I'm, and I'm supportive of, of this, but I, I do feel strongly that, I mean, we have a large contingent of people who live in town who need an affordable place to live, and I, I want to make sure that they who have invested and given so much to the community have an opportunity to get something back.
Yes.
I mean, just to build affordable units... I mean, just to build affordable units, to say we're building affordable units is not really, I mean, it makes us look good as a community, but it's not serving the people that I would like to serve.
Right. And so we will have to talk with legal and we'll also have to talk with Ida to see, you know, I mean, all of these things are worked out in tenant selection plans, they, in a case like this. But, so we may not have quite as much flexibility as we do with our inclusionary housing ordinance where we, you know, the, we don't have any caps on how many can be from where. I mean, we have a much stronger preference when it is not outside funding.
So when, when do we, how long would it take to find that out? And why is this on for action tonight and not introduction?
What we're doing is we're asking for authority to put in a letter of support.
For two million dollars.
Right. Because it has to go in through the whole application process.
Yeah, but it's for two million dollars and that's, it's important to me to have some questions answered.
Mm-hmm.
Alderman Brithwaite?
So to follow up on the question, so the action item is not the two million, but the letter?
That's correct.
Correct.
That's, okay.
But the letter is referencing, just so we're all clear, the letter is referencing that the city is supportive of this project and going to look for a way to come up with its, you know, appropriate share to make this come to reality.
Okay, we got some others. Did you have anything else, Alderman Brithwaite?
I want to be, I definitely want to be supportive. I'm glad we got the clarification around the two million, Alderman Rainey. I was concerned also that we were voting on two million in one swoop without understanding where all those pieces are going to come from. It's a great project. I'm not going to dismiss that. I'm just questioning more, where does that two point, where does that two million come from? And if we do take it out of the affordable housing, do we have other projects coming down the pipeline that are, that have already been voted on that will fund, put more additional dollars back into that fund?
We have two planned developments that are under review right now.
Okay.
So let's, Sarah, so if we need to come up with two million dollars, you know, what, seven hundred and fifty thousand or so, looking at these numbers, how much can we use? Do we think of home funds? I know we can use from some different years. And then how much would be sort of our unrestricted, you know, affordable housing funds that come through the IHO?
Right. What I hope to be able to do is use at least five hundred thousand of home, but, you know, we are waiting to find out what happens to home. The other thing, and the rest would come from the Affordable Housing Fund because we don't have any other specified sources for affordable housing other than that. We, in theory, could look at using CDBG for some, you can't build new housing, you can use it for infrastructure and stuff like that, but I don't know that that's really our best use of those funds. One of the things that I will also do is I'm going to, assuming that we have the support of the council, is I will start talking to Cook County. Because one of the things that we were able to do on some, on the housing authority of Cook County's rehab of their units was we worked with the, with Cook County and did a collaborative home project. And actually, we put in way less money than they did because we didn't have anywhere near as much. When we did the rehab of Walter and Pearlman, we put in a hundred and fifty thousand and the Cook County Housing, the Cook County, not the housing authority, the regular Cook County, put in about three and a half million of their home. I don't know that we could get that kind of deal ever again because they had a lot of stuff that they were going to lose if they didn't use, but we would certainly explore that. That's what we always try to do is find other ways to get other money.
If your estimates are right, five hundred thousand came from home, one point five million from the Affordable Housing Fund, how much would that leave us in the Affordable Housing Fund, say, you know, a year from now?
Well, we have in the neighborhood of eight hundred thousand dollars on, right now.
Yep. And then two point four coming in or something.
And we're going to get two point four from the eight eleven. We're going to get seventy-five thousand from the Skimmerhorn project. We don't have any other major commitments from new developments. We get a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year from the Mather because we get that for the right of way under Davis. And so that we get every year. And we usually get about fifty thousand dollars in demolition taxes each year, so.
I'm sorry, what was that? The last number?
About fifty thousand in demolition taxes.
All right. So running those numbers really quickly, you got like three point three million, eight hundred, eight hundred thousand in it right now, sort of the balance, two point four million that comes in from eight thirty-one Emerson, a hundred and twenty-five thousand from Mather you get each year, and then seventy-five thousand from the Skimmerhorn project. Real quick, is my math right? Three point three? Did I miss? Yeah, I think it's, that's nine hun, eight hundred, no, it's, it's three point four. Three point four. And if you take one point five from that, you end up with what, one point, one point nine million remaining. Okay? So one, one point five is the portion of the Affordable Housing Fund we'd have to put towards this project if you did it to get your two million. To use, again, just using her estimate here, she used a half a million from the home funds, one point five million, you've still got, you know, a little less than two million in this fund a year from now. Okay, we got a couple of the lights on. Alderman Rainey, then Alderman Fisk?
You, you have never been offered sixty units of affordable housing for people who are making thirty percent and fifty percent of median income. This is, this is something we probably will never be offered again. I mean, it's never happened before. So the opportunity, to pass on this opportunity would be really folly, I believe. It's thirty-three thousand dollars per unit. We have spent so much more on single, single units to rehab them. We have spent fifty, sixty, seventy, hundred and twenty, two hundred thousand on units to rehab, to rehab. This is brand-new housing with elevators for seniors. There is no more greater need than senior housing with elevators. You know that. I mean, you've been to Pearlman, you've been to the other senior house. These folks need senior housing. This is extremely accessible for seniors who don't need special care. They very much need it. And to quibble over how many seniors are going to get housing preference for Evanston, we're going to make that happen. We are going to make that happen. And if this, if this application doesn't go in by February fifteen, we're going to lose a whole year, another year. This should have gone in last year, but we missed the deadline. So I really plead with you. They might not even get this awarded. Ida might turn us down. I mean, they turned down the Y a couple of years ago when they had a, they had a perfect project to renovate the Y. Ida turned them down. Let's give this a shot. We have the money. That's why we're charging these developers, so that we can get this kind of bankroll to provide for affordable housing. That's why we're doing it. That's why we're doing it.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Seeing no, seeing, oh, yeah, oh, I'm sorry if I turned it off. Alderman Fisk, okay?
That'll, that'll trick. Yep, Alderman Rainey, I'm, I'm going to support this. I just, I just have questions about it. No, 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 I, I'm going to support it. It's a good project and I want to support it. I, I want to be really careful of, of...
It's a lot of money. I just want to make sure.
Well, I want to be careful that we have asked the questions and explained it to people. I wish it wasn't for action. I wish it was for introductions so we could talk about it a little bit more, but we don't need to talk about it a little bit more. I know that's what you're going to tell me. And that's, and that's fine. That's fine. I do want to make one point though, I mean, a personal, a personal point. I, we, we do have an Affordable Housing Fund that comes from residential buildings that pay into the, have an option of paying into the fund. I, I don't want that to be the reason why we might approve buildings that would be inappropriate for their site or not beautiful buildings. I don't want that to be the driver for why we make a decision on whether to approve a development or not. That's real important to me, but I'm glad we've got the money coming in. So Alderman Rainey, I'm, I'm going to support this gladly, but I, I do want to be really, really careful that we don't put the cart before the horse.
And just so everybody knows, the math that I did was just on the existing building of eight thirty-one and the others. It didn't account for any additional money that may come in from new developments that have been approved. Okay. All right, seeing no more lights. City Clerk, could you take, we had a, a motion that was seconded. This is for SP four approval of the letter of support to the Illinois Housing Development Authority for sixty-unit affordable senior housing development by Evergreen Development at ten fifteen Howard Street. And in the letter, it will mention the city of Evanston's commitment to apply or allocate two million dollars to this project in some, in some form. We won't go into the details of how we're going to get there. City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Fleming?
I thought he said, this is hard, I'm unsure. But I can't, that's not a vote, I realize.
You can...
All right, I'm, yes.
Alderman Fleming, Alderman Fisk, Alderman Brithwaite, Alderman Wynn, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Rue Simmons, Alderman Sufferton, Alderman Vervell, Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
All right, SP four approval of the letter passes the city council on a nine to zero vote. Thank you, Mr. Block, for the presentation and your investment here in Evanston. Best of luck with Ida. We're going to now move on to call the wards. We'll start with Alderman Fleming.
Thank you very much.
No report. I just want to thank Sarah, Sarah Flax. She and I had a chance to chat at Adrian Willoughby's service and she had very good things to say about him and his work behind the scenes in the city that I was able to relay to his family. So they were very appreciative of hearing all the things that people thought about him.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, thank you, Alderman Fleming, for that. I want to say something in regard to a, the reference by Alderman Wilson at our last meeting and the follow-up from Mayor Hagerty regarding Harley Clark. I do think it's important for us to have a dialogue up here. There was a letter read into the record tonight and I think the community is, is sort of proceeding with, without us. Personally, I'd rather sort of wait and let this all settle down, but I'm not sure that it is going to do that. So I, I would like to, I think there are multiple ways forward on it and I would like to second what the mayor said and get some feeling from the council about what we see next steps to be, because I think there are a number of different avenues to, to pursue here.
Okay. When we finish calling the wards, I'm going to turn to the city manager just to help with some scheduling and we can think as well about when we put that on the agenda to have a conversation about that. Alderman Brithwaite?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report, but I would like to extend a word of condolences to the family and friends of Adrian Willoughby. I know there were a number of us that were at the ceremony. Very nice service and keeping the family in our prayers.
Thank you. Alderman, Alderman Wynn?
Yes, this Thursday, I will be having my office hours at Brothers Cave from seven AM to ten AM. Thank you.
Great. Alderman Wilson?
And the thirteenth, we have the meeting at six o'clock to talk about the Crown Project and hopefully answer any questions that remain amongst the community.
Great. Alderman Rue Simmons?
Thank you. On February thirteenth, please join us for our fifth ward meeting, seven PM here at the Civic Center in room G three hundred. We'll have a presentation by a new business coming stacked and folded, was also going for a liquor license this week. And if you were unable to make the opening reception for the Sankofa Haiti Art Exhibit at Gibbs Morrison, it is there for your viewing pleasure for the next thirty days. Please make your way over there. It is curated and the collector is Gabrielle Jean-Paul Aguilar, I believe I'm saying that correctly. Thank you, Gabby, for doing that. And I'd like to add a note about the proposed development at Emerson and Jackson. For the record, the developer has been invited. We have reached out to have them come and present to the community as it is our requirement that they do so. And at this point, we have not received a response. So we're aware of the development and we have not received a response, but do take comfort in the very intense process they would have to go through to get this development passed. One thing I would like to say, it's Black History Month and a couple of things. One, I would like to remember Alderman Spencer. She was a civil rights activist. She was the first black woman Alderman and she was instrumental in passing the Fair Housing Ordinance. She also marched for open housing and for integrated hospitals. One more thing I'd like to say, in nineteen forty, black Evanston residents were as likely to own their homes as middle-class and elite white families. That is even with black families not having access to lending. Lenders were refusing to lend to them. So in twenties and the thirties, black families had, one-third of the population owned their homes. Just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Sufferton?
I'd just like to note that between Human Services and the council tonight, we got through seven of nine agenda items in four hours and thirty-five minutes. That's all.
Thank you. Alderman Ravel, Alderman Rainey?
Thank you. There's going to be a multiple neighborhood meeting tomorrow and Brummel Park neighbors, Callan Clyde neighbors and four fifteen Howard neighbors are going to meet tomorrow night, seven o'clock at Peckish, at Peckish Pig and encourage everybody to contribute to Interfaith Action Council on behalf of Adrian Willoughby. His family has asked for that and I think that's a wonderful way to honor his memory.
Thank you for mentioning that, Alderman Rainey. City manager, I know we have some administrative items before we adjourn.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So my sense is we want to continue the affordable housing discussions. So the next fifth Monday is in April, on April twenty-ninth. So unless there's an objection, we'll go ahead and schedule a meeting on April twenty-ninth to talk about affordable housing. Whatever, whatever remains pending, I think there was the demolition tax, there was, I think, it will be updates from the Affordable Housing Plan Committee that'll be done. So would propose that we do that on April twenty-ninth. Any objections?
No.
Okay. Would you like us not to have the meeting?
No.
Okay. All right. So April twenty-ninth then for that. The goals meeting we had planned for last week was frozen out. So Susie sent around some dates which immediately were not acceptable to several of you, so I'd like to try to get a date right now if you have calendars handy. Do you have calendars handy? So next week on the twelfth of February, which is Tuesday, six o'clock?
Wait, the twelfth?
The twelfth.
Okay. I'm out of town, but if it works for others.
So we usually don't schedule that quick. So the next would be not until March fourth, which would be, we could do after Human Services, like we did, it's for twenty nineteen goals.
We'll do twenty twenty while we're at it.
And twenty twenty. Okay. March the sixth, Wednesday, not available the whole week. March twelfth, Arts Council's at six thirty, Preservations at seven.
At some point, you got to pick a date, you know.
What about that? No one's picking one? That works for me.
Wait, if February twelfth works, I'm the, I'm out of town, but do the February twelfth if that works for everybody.
Only once.
I'd rather see the council do it earlier than wait till March, honestly, if it, February twelfth works.
So February twelfth, six o'clock. Would the council also like to talk about city manager goals in executive session that night or schedule that another night?
Another night.
Another night. Why don't we post it and we'll see how the night goes? And then lastly, I beg your pardon?
Well, city manager, you guys would still go for with the twelfth, February twelfth. I can't, no. I'm in California.
I can't, no, I'm in California.
All right, so February 12th, we'll do the goals meeting, and then Harley-Clark. Would you like a special meeting? Would you like?
What are we discussing?
I think, I think for Harley-Clark, what I think folks would like to discuss is, what's the, what's the process, and how do we want to, you know, try to move forward as a council?
We just spent a year on the process, and we didn't do anything.
I know, but, but, you know, Alderman Wilson's asked the city staff to look at one of the proposals that somebody brought forward. Alderman Fisk subsequently said, hey, if there's other proposals, take a look, take a look at those. We had, you know, some folks get up at council today and say, hey, this, the community's moving forward, you know, listen to us. At the end of the day, it's the folks up here at this dais that are the stewards of city assets, and this is a city asset, so.
I'm perfectly happy to have nothing happen.
We would like a committee.
No committees, no.
We, yeah, we did a committee. If we talk about one proposal, we have to do RFP and talk about anybody's proposal, correct?
Well, what we're just talking about is, I really think this is like a process discussion, it's not, this is what's going to happen to Harley-Clark.
There's a motion to adjourn in a second?
Wait, wait.
No, no, no.
Stop that.
All right. Alderman, Alderman Fisk has her light on.
I did, I did have my light on.
You did.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just, there are so many things happening. I would personally be preferred not to talk about anything for a while and let everything just sort of settle down, but the community apparently is moving on. There's Landmarks Illinois is doing some sort of something there, and, I mean, there's, there's discussions happening. I, if we're going to do something, if we're going to consider the Alderman Wilson proposal, or the related proposal to his referral, then we should do everyone, but if we're not going to do that, then we don't need to do anything. But whatever we do, I think we should open it up to everyone, or not do anything.
I think if the community's having meetings, which this is a community that has a lot of meetings, any of us could go to that meeting and talk to them, and hear what they have to say. I don't think we need to bring their community meeting to the dais just because. I mean, they invited us to their meeting, so I think anyone who's interested in what the community is talking about can go to the community meeting and participate.
Right, but we have someone apparently who has expressed interest to, one of the council members, to come and meet with the city manager to flesh out a proposal, and I just don't think it's-
We send her to the community.
I don't think it's the right thing to do, to focus on one proposal, when there are, as Ms. Storey pointed out to us, there are people who contact us on a regular basis for interest in the, in the house.
But then that means we're going back to the RFP or something process, right? You're saying, open it up for more proposals?
I'm just saying, if we open it up for one, we should open it up for all. That's, that's fine.
Why don't we let the community meeting host all of these proposals, and they present to the community?
Yeah, there's a motion to adjourn. I would support that.
We have to let them do it. I'd support that.
How about we put it on, just pick a night, like the 18th, 25th, whatever, pick a night and have a conversation about what the next step should be? Just have an agenda.
Why don't we leave it, if folks are good, to the discretion of the city manager, who knows the agenda really well, for which night would be appropriate, given other items on there, as a special order of business, which is just process-oriented with Harley-Clark. Okay? Just process, it's just process-oriented.
So we, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the 18th, we already have a whole variety of special orders, from police annual reports to the streetlight master plan, so maybe the 25th as a special order, why don't we shoot for that?
Fine, fine. All right, do we, we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, everyone in favor? All right, thank you, everyone, for coming out and for the good work tonight.